Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the Board of Aldermen's meeting for Monday, October 21st. First order of business is the minutes of Thursday, September 25th, which was our special board meeting, and Monday, October 7th. Someone would like to move those for approval?
For the approval.
Second.
Any debate on the motion? Any changes?
Yes, one change.
Okay, Alderman Whitcomb?
The motion from the Board of Aldermen meeting, I did not actually make the motion to authorize the contractor's signature for College of St. Joseph. I was in fact, the sole vote against it.
This is for the September meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So...
You were absent, were you not?
No, he was here.
No, I believe he was here, but no, for the last full board meeting.
So, DePoy, and that says Whitcomb, to come out of executive session motion?
Monday, October 7th.
I believe it was DePoy and Mattis who authorized Mary's.
Oh, okay. So, we want to make the change, DePoy and Mattis. Okay. All right, any other changes, corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are outside the rail for anyone to address the Board on Matters Not on the Agenda. Mayor LaRue.
So, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to welcome some visitors to our Board of Aldermen meeting tonight. Earlier this evening, they paid me a visit down to my office and we had some interaction, asked some good questions about my job in city government. And I wanted the Board of Aldermen to recognize and welcome the Cub Scout PAC 120, The Moose Lodge, to the Board of Aldermen meeting tonight. And they are seated right over there on the far end.
Great, welcome. We're glad to have you. Thank you. Anyone else outside the rail? Just if you could state your name, please?
Sure, I'm Mary Cohen. And I just want to remind everybody that the Rutland Region Chamber Annual Meeting is happening on Thursday. And the theme this year is strength and resilience. We're giving away Business Leader of the Year, Community Leader of the Year, and Stephanie Schaefer will be our guest speaker. So, we'd love to see all there.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else outside the rail? Welcome, Sammy. If you just give your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you. I'm Sam Guerusso, 4 Eastview Court, Rutland City. And glad to be here. I was counting before the meeting, there's six people in the room that were here in 1992 when I was here. That's, I think, including the cameraman. So, I got a lot going on. It's been a wild year for me. I've been dealing with health issues since, you know, back in '05, whatever. Started out the year in and out of Rutland and Dartmouth Medical Center and about four months of issues. And it's been a crazy year. My company's not doing well. The economy in Rutland's not well, and that's a major thing we've got to deal with, I think. And I hope it gets better. It was bad in '92, and I have confidence it'll come back again. And you've had personal issues, my family issues. My wife's been traveling five hours from here and her sister passed away over the weekend, so we'll be dealing with a funeral this week.
Sorry, Sam.
But, one of the things that's kind of got me is I kind of started out about this board was I remember in '92, some of the most fabulous people on this board and sharing and, you know, Bill and Paul can really remember them. They taught me a lot. And we're here as representatives of the city. We're here to represent the voters. We're here to represent the people who are afraid to come to the mic and talk. And we try to do what's best for them. And we circulate the little ballot box and we voted for people that we thought would serve us best, you know? And with all the stress and all that that's going on, I'm just personally offended, and most people know me, I try not to be a raving maniac, but I get a letter from, you know, our water department, I guess, because the charter said we would provide fire protection for people and police protection and water and sewer and all that. And yeah, I've had a lot going on, but I'm threatened here by a letter that says I am going to be charged some $750 a quarter for my water bill based on the fact that there are three bedrooms in my house and apparently six people living in my house. Well, my wife and I are the only two that have been in this house. I've never spent more than $750 a year in water bills. And now I'm going to, and I'll call and I'll get this taken care of, but as a representative of the city, I thought you should know letters like this are going out. And if this is what the new company is urging us to do, I don't think it's nice, because it's kind of like standing out in the corner, "Vote for me, I'm going to send you nasty letters." And I just think that for the people at home, it's the only house I've got, it's the only tax bill I got, it's the only water bill I got. And I'm always kind of offended by it, that, you know, our water system, you know, the one that I represented and you guys represented, and almost, if I were inside the rail, I'd like to see a motion to bring some of these people in and say, "Let's talk to them." You know, we've got to face the people out there. And you guys might as well send me a letter threatening me to charge me $750 a month or quarter for water. And like I said, I've never had that much in a year, and I think it's a real blow in the face to get such a letter.
Sammy, if I may, and I think some of the other Aldermen can help. I believe that you were put on a scheduled, I'll say, payment type of thing because your meter has not been switched out to the new Fathom meter. So, we had a, actually, we had a DPW committee meeting about this two weeks ago. And if I'm understanding right, and you'll have to correct me, they send a number of notices out to you to encourage you to be able to contact the city and set up a meeting so that they can go in and put in the new meter. And that's the last letter that goes out, the one that you're speaking of now. So, absolutely, it will be taken care of. And, but you need to do it soon, because I think that, if I recall right, we had another person who received the same kind of thing. November 1st is the deadline, so you've got to do it pre-November 1st to get that bill put back to your normal pay. Or normal rate that you pay, okay?
And believe me.
And I would call DPW and speak with them and ask them to assist you in that meeting, okay? Alderman Clifford?
There have been a number of problems, but we're, it's in committee, we are meeting, going to be meeting once a month, we met the other day. I wasn't there, but Alderman Tom, Chair of the Board, we do, we're aware of these things and we are, you know, taking care of them. So, as we go, we're trying to make sure that the lines of communication are careful.
Right. And again, I'm not, it's not a complaint, it's not like I'm raving mad, but I just, like I said, with all that's been going on in my life, and it's been a battle, like I said, to keep my business going, I open the mail and get this like punch in the face of a $725 quarterly bill. I am going to call and I am going to get it done, and I'm going to try to fit it into the schedule with what's going on right now. But, I just thought you guys should know, if you didn't know this, that, you know, it's a surprise to get, this is my city, it's your city. And it's always been that way. And I want to, you know, I hope everyone can be in harmony and all that and happy and work the best we can to keep everybody happy. But that wasn't what I'm used to seeing from the city, and I didn't think you guys should, you know, not know it. And I thank you.
I thank you. We appreciate you bringing it in.
Have a good night, Alderman. Keep up the good work.
Take care, Sammy.
Thank you.
I hope you feel better.
Thank you, I'm doing good. Much better, thank you.
Glad to hear. Is there anyone else outside the rail? Yes, ma'am, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. My name is Julia Purdy. I live at 22 Watkins Avenue. And first of all, I want to thank you for letting me stand here and make my case. I'm going to actually add one little quick thing before I get to my point, which was, some of you may know that I write occasionally for The Mountain Times. And I just finished a story on some of the businesses up at Diamond Run Mall that are, you know, having to face moving and what that meant for them and stuff. And the ones that I talked to who seemed to be, were able to talk to me and maybe landing on their feet are actually owner-operated businesses. And they were all excited as heck to be able to come downtown. And the feeling of one of the shoppers actually was, yes, this is going to revitalize downtown. So, just to let you guys know that.
Good, thank you. We appreciate that.
My main point coming tonight is, I'd like to ask the Aldermen to consider an ordinance, an anti-litter ordinance specifically aimed at people who walk their dogs and very nicely and carefully bag up the dog droppings and then leave it on the side of the sidewalk. Or throw it out in the street. And in particular, I think the most egregious case was down at The Pet Cage, which is on the corner of Grove and Crescent. And they've had someone in the neighborhood, I don't know if they know who it is, who uses a bright blue bag and walks down there and bags up the poop and then throws it into East Creek. And sometimes the bags aren't even tied. So, I was talking with the folks there, because I buy my cat food there, and one of the staff people who was going to try to make it tonight, actually climbed down the bank of East Creek and collected, you know, 20 of these bags out of the, some were in the water, some were on the bank, in the brush and stuff. And then the shop printed its own, you know, no littering sign that it posted on a tree on its property. But, I don't know if Rutland actually has an anti-littering ordinance, but I think that maybe something could be done to really bring this to the attention and maybe make these dog walkers think twice about what they're doing. Because I know at Front of Jones Bakery, I wrote a letter to the editor to, Front of Jones Bakery, there was a nice yellow bag tied right on the little apron. They're careful not to throw it on private property, they're always throwing it on public property somewhere. And it was breaking off, breaking out, and, you know, there were insects and things getting into it. And that just sat there and sat there and sat there and sat there. And so, if there's something that could be done to just alert the public that we don't like this, it's not sanitary, it's not great for little kids playing, you know, et cetera, I don't think I have to say anymore. But if we could do that, that would, I think, be a good move.
So, Julia did reach out to me via an email and asked if she could come this evening. So, I did take an opportunity and I sent you an actual email this evening that we do, our dog ordinance does cover disposal of waste, dog waste. And there are fines that are already associated with the ordinance. So, I'm going to, I'm not sure, we don't have to recreate the wheel, it's already there.
Okay, sure.
But it's enforcement that's the issue. So, I'm going to look at the city attorney to see about some guidance of whether or not we refer this to the police. Looking for some suggestions for enforcement.
Would it be?
We have an animal control officer as well.
Okay. But nobody knows who's doing this. You know, they usually do it before they go to work or after dark, but I'm just, they must be getting something when they register their animal.
I'm not sure that we give out, when they're registering their animal, we don't give out any copy of the ordinance, no.
That might be a...
We do have a Roland Harold reporter here, so hopefully some of this will make the newspaper, so people will read it and think, "Oh, that's me, I shouldn't be doing this." But, again, I'll turn to the attorney to see if he can guide us a little bit.
Yeah, I would say because there's already an ordinance, that it might be best refer either to the Public Safety Committee if the Aldermen want to take it up, or maybe directly to the Police Commission to talk about what they think they might need for enforcement. I know that we do a lot of database policing, so it may just be that people should be calling probably the non-911 number, the regular dispatch number, to report where they're finding this, so that patrol could potentially, especially if we know what time of day, patrol, I think, can change their, you know, what they're looking, where they are at certain times of the day based on, again, a number of reports. But that might be something that either, again, the Aldermen can ask the police chief to come into a committee meeting, or if it were to be referred to the Police Commission, and you would want them to spend some time on it. Either of those, I think, would make sense before any kind of ordinance change would be made.
Okay. So, I didn't know about an existing ordinance, but...
Well, and I apologize, because it took me a while to just sit down and read it and go through it. And then I did send you a text just this evening, so you had an awareness to it. Or not a text, but an email this evening. So, Alderman DePoy?
Well, it just surprises me that somebody would make the effort to bag it up and tie it up and everything and then throw it, you know, on the side of the road. But the thing that really, whoever is doing this should consider is if they're throwing it into the state waterways, which all of the, whether it be Tennybrook or East Creek, they're throwing stuff in the state waterways, they're going to have the state, you know, statutes to deal with as well, not just the city ordinance. And that state statute's going to have a lot more teeth than the city ordinance. So, as far as the police go, the police have every, you know, power to go and cite somebody if they catch them throwing anything into the state waterways, which includes East Creek and Tennybrook.
Well, I just wonder if that's effective enough? Because I think of one really outstanding example, too, several years ago, when I was living on Route 4 East. Someone threw a bag of that out in the middle of Woodstock Avenue. And, you know, we're relying on the cars running over it and eventually scattering it, and, you know, so now you've got it on your tires. And I just feel like, I think it puts a burden on the police, because you're not going to be able to post somebody there while you have all of your other stuff to do. I just think if there was something, a notice that went out when somebody either went out through the vets, when people bring their animal in for rabies shots, or went out with the license specifically saying, because there's a lot of new people moving into town, too. And this is something that I think has increased in recent years. It even happens out in the countryside. I lived in Chittingden and there was somebody who was doing it along Barnard Road. You know, it's like, why bother? Carry it away. Anyway, that's just my case. I appreciate you guys listening. Thank you.
Alderman Etori?
Maybe you were asking the clerk what I was going to...
Okay. I was just talking with the clerk to say how hard, what kind of a burden, if any, would that put on the clerk's office when we go in to register our dog, to get a copy of that, to say, you know, this is the rules, this is what you have to follow, and these are the fines that could be imposed. He didn't feel that that would be a hardship at all to hand that out with a dog license type of thing. My only concern is I think we make the police aware, but I'm not, with all the things that they have to do, I'm not sure that that's going to be a priority for them. And whether or not you see an improvement in that kind of activity. Alderman Etori, you're outside.
So, yeah, I think it would be great if the clerk's office could come up with a one-pager of some of the stuff that would be important. I don't know if you do already, but I think that would be helpful in general. And then I think it's, you know, it's that age-old piece of trying to, you know, meet the people in your neighborhood, walking around, walking the dogs, trying to, you know, get to them and help them, you know, understand that it is a community and that we all rely on each other to kind of do our part. So, you know, maybe there's other neighbors, maybe it's a police, the police department who manages that area, just talk about how to create that kind of responsibility for each other.
Alderman Ryan?
Yeah, Madam President, I was just echoing what you were saying in that, you know, I don't know if calling into the station every time a dog bag is, you know, thrown out, that's not going to help, right? So, my suggestion would be go to the Police Commission meeting and I can let you know when the next one is. And maybe talk to the animal control officer. But as Madam President said, I don't know if they're going to sit and wait for the next bag to fly out of there.
Alderman Humphrey?
Thank you. So, you mentioned that you found the ordinance today. Do you recall what the fine is?
I believe it started at $500.
Okay. I mean, since we have Gordon D., we might as well. And just a second, that, it happens in my neighborhood, too, and I know it's a tough conversation to have with neighbors, but, I mean, if you knew, you'd be like, hey, you know there is like a $500 ticket for that. It's easier way to have the, I mean, I have the, it's hard, like, in city parks and stuff, talking about this milk and ordinance and things, but it's worth a mention.
Okay. So, Alderman Gillen?
I think this falls under the same category as litter and drug paraphernalia that's found in the streets and the alleys. It's the same old syndrome. Neighborhoods are going to have to get involved. You see something, say something. And that's how it's going to have to start. Because obviously, the cops can't be everywhere all the time. But, once they start doing this, community police and start getting a database set up, then they can circle in on it. And that system seems to be working on all the other issues. I think you should use the same thing for this issue coming up.
So, maybe if we could request that, a motion to, I'm going to say, just encourage the clerk's office to, at, in April, when we're licensing our dogs, that there's a portion of the ordinance that's connected to that license for informational. And also request the clerk, maybe notify Chief Kilcullen and the animal control officer that this complaint's been brought to us, so there's some awareness at that level at this time, okay? If somebody could move that.
So moved.
Second. Any debate on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Hopefully, we'll make a difference, Julia. We'll see how it goes. And then Sean Sargent is the Chair of the Police Commission. His number is in the annual report. If you continue to see a problem, feel free to reach out to me and also to Sean Sargent. All right? Thank you. Is there anything, anyone else outside the rail to address the Board on Matters Not on the Agenda? Seeing none. We're moving on to communications from the mayor. First, we need to untable the mayoral appointments from the Health Board.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, and we need a motion to...
Circulate the ballot box.
Second.
Is there any debate on the motion to circulate the ballot box? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, just a moment.
We're doing this individually.
So, the first one is going to be Courtney Collins for a two-year term. And we'll be circulating the ballot box for Courtney Collins.
Oh, I have his nose. Oh, wait, I got it.
Like a yes or a no?
So, yeah, it's blacking out.
We lost the Cub Scouts.
We almost...
You got enough?
Yes, we got enough.
Then it'll light them back up.
Apparently, it kind of looks like somebody's been taking mine.
It's weird.
Sorry, man.
Wish you had your pain ready when you come to the window.
I've got Tog in the van, he...
We just had a bunch of Cub Scouts here, Mr. Purdy. It's like, be prepared, right?
But we never get them back. There must be a desk full of yeses and noses.
We'll ask the city attorney to calculate.
Please, we want three transactions.
The next one up is Mark Woodbury for a three-year term.
That's Dr. Woodbury.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I did have a couple of other things I wanted to touch on tonight. As you recall, a couple of months ago, I asked the Board of Aldermen for the authorization to go out for an RFP on our insurances. Those were property and casualty liability and workers' comp. We had a deadline of earlier this month, in October, to receive those RFPs, to receive those bids. We ended up really only getting one. We were working with two different insurers to get those numbers in. They were the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and Hickock and Boardman. This year, unlike previous years, we did start really early. We have provided ample time for both folks to receive the information and acquire the information from us. Earlier this month, Hickock and Boardman informed us that they would be coming in significantly higher because of our experience rating on the workers' comp end, has gone up a little this year. And we never did get a final quote from them. So, on the flip side, the league did provide a quote at our deadline, and overall, they're up about 2.3% for all of those insurances, which we feel is, considering where they were last year, and we talked a lot about workers' comp, and we were concerned about the big increase in that. We feel very stable that, with those numbers. So, we are going to go with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. We are building our budgets based on those rates, as there was really no decision to make. We are planning to meet with both the league and Hickock and Boardman after I get the budget to everyone on November 1st, and to talk a little bit about strategies and work at trying to bring down our mod rate and overall, bring those rates down. But, overall, I feel good about the process. I think it, we got a lot of information from both those insurers. We were able to relay a lot back and forth, which I think was a very helpful process and will help us as we're going through the budget process. On the flip side, and everyone, I think, is aware of this that reads the paper, Blue Cross Blue Shield rates are a whole different story. For us here in the city, they're up 9%, which is a pretty significant amount of money, especially considering the fact that we are a pretty large municipality. It is proving challenging as we're starting to build the budgets. I've met with probably three or four of the departments, and we'll continue to meet with them this week and next week. But, we will find a way to keep the budget within reason. I have every confidence of that. On a whole different topic, I think I've mentioned a couple of times before that we had reached out to Efficiency Vermont about doing some smaller projects to try to save some money, in particular, in our heating and cooling costs. Bob Pelletier from our building inspector and myself have actually met with Efficiency Vermont a couple of different times, and we've concentrated on what we could do here in this building. This is a big old building that is not insulated at all, and it, our heating and cooling bills are pretty significant. So, we have come up with an initial plan to do some insulation, both in the attic and the, down in the basement. We have some initial cost estimates. But, if we sign up with Efficiency Vermont and one of their plans, we can split the cost with them 50/50. So, what I'm planning on doing is going out to bid and, because obviously, it's going to be over $3,000, and get that process going this week. And what we'd like to do is set it within a timeframe that we'll be able to get those bids back, have them awarded, and get a plan in place and do some of that work before winter sets in. But, the initial estimates on the cost savings is pretty significant, and the turnaround is within a relatively short period of time, and I'm talking maybe two years or less. So, more information will be coming on that as we figure out exactly how we're going to do that. And I think there's some opportunities to be able to fund that in this year's budget, obviously. And my final thing tonight is, I wanted to just take a quick minute to thank the citizens of the city of Rutland, all of you folks at home, and everyone here at City Hall, for your words of encouragement and your kind thoughts after the tragic events that everybody's aware of over the last... aware of over the last two weeks, which has affected my family, as you all know. I appreciate it. Our family appreciates it. And also, I wanted to say, I've had extensive discussions with the members over at the Rutland City Police Department, and they appreciate it very much. The city has rallied around the department. Those folks that were directly involved in that were affected also, them and their families. And the support that they've received in this community is nothing short of phenomenal. So I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that tonight in my remarks. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the mayor on the issues he discussed before we move on? So for the Board of Health, for Courtney Collins, a two-year term, 10 yes, 0 no. For Mark Woodbury, a three-year term, 10 yes, 0 no. And for Mary Nemeth, a one-year term, nine yes, one no. So all appointments have been confirmed. Okay. So we are on to additions and deletions to the agenda.
So I think that you've been informed on one of them. That would be a discussion in executive session of the lease agreement with CSJ. And the other one was, we wanted to have a brief discussion on the condition and the forward plan for Dunkley Dam.
And we also have a general committee report and a committee of the whole report to please add to the agendas.
Motion to add to the agenda those four items.
Any debate on the motion to add to the agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So Mayor Lair, do you want to do Dunkley Pond Dam under you?
If we could. Yeah, we could do that first.
That's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, we've got a couple of guests here, so. As you folks remember, there was a significant rain event last week. There was some overtopping up at Dunkley Dam once again. And after some initial investigation by both our Emergency Management Director, we brought down some folks from the state, it was pretty evident that there was some significant deterioration up there at the dam. We had all along planned on doing some initial work to shore up the dam, maybe for a one-year period, and then figure out a way to tackle the, actually dismantling of the dam. That whole series of events has been speeded up because of what we feel is some rapid deterioration up there. So I've got a couple of folks here that would like to speak to it, from our Department of Environmental Conservation, I think. Is that correct? Yep, Todd Manis, and of course, we have Bill Lovett, our Emergency Management Director. But what we're hoping to do is give you just a brief rundown of where we are and the whole process. We have talked to the landowners. We've gotten some sign off on them. We'd like to go in there within the next week or two, if that's possible, and do up some shoring, because we feel it's an emergency situation. Not that we feel that the dam's going to break, but another couple of events like this, and there could be the possibility. So we do have a plan on doing that work, which would get us through the winter, and then put a longer-range plan together, find some funding to do the actual dismantling of the dam. And this is something that the state has quite a bit of experience in doing, is unfortunately, there are a lot of dams that are in this sort of situation, that were all built more or less in the same time period of the same materials, and this is becoming a common problem. But for us here in the city, there is some danger down with some residential properties and some city property also downstream. So whoever would like to go first. Bill's going to go first.
Yes, sir. Emergency Management Director.
Yeah, I appreciate your time tonight. Over the last week in particular, we've noticed a rapid deterioration of the dam, including a lean situation where the increase in the lean of part of the retainment wall is about three and a half inches, more than it was two days prior to this last rain event. Also, I noticed a significant erosion of the dam face that occurred through this last storm, probably in the area of about six and a half feet, by foot and a half, of the faces dropped away. So having a number of people come in from the state, and I'll have Todd speak to that, we're noticing a condition that probably will not survive the winter. If we were to have a whole failure of the dam, we have quite an impact on the infrastructure of the city, in particular, Main Street Bridge and some of the lower-lying areas that are tributaries to Tinney Brook, particularly around Adams Street, Pearl, and North. So it is, it needs to be addressed rapidly. And so I'll refer to Todd, and he can give us the particulars of the significance.
Thank you. Pleasure to be back here. Follow-up from last year. Todd Manis, I'm one of the River Management Engineers in the Vermont Rivers Program. And dam removals are at accelerating pace in our state, and it's something that I've been tasked with about three years ago, because they take a lot of time. And I first took a look at this in 2017, looked again in 2018, earlier this year, again on Tuesday last week, before that Thursday rain event, and then on Friday. So I've been watching this fail, and it hasn't completely unraveled, but it is unraveling at an increasing pace, which, when I was driving down Friday, I thought, God, I hope this isn't as bad as I think. And it wasn't. But it's still, and there's a document that you might have had paper. Yep. And on the third page, I've circled in the photos where the gaps are, where the rock has been lost last Thursday's flood event. So it had previously, my first visit in 2017, been going over the spillway, and now it's going, over the spillway and through the gaps in the stone. Now it's going all ways, and on the north side, quite a bit of additional failure modes. The wall that Bill had mentioned moved three and a half inches just from Tuesday to Friday, which was very disturbing to see that. So as a public safety issue, our dam safety program wrote a letter, a couple of different documents. And we've gotten, the two landowners have agreed to grant access. Very important. So how quickly can we get in there? Can we get this done before Thanksgiving? Because we were concerned that an ice-out event or some other high-flow event might have it fail catastrophically, which is potentially going to block the culvert under Route 7. It's a very old style, very narrow, very tall, so it could be blocked with tree debris, rocks, et cetera. So I wanted to give you this briefing. This that I prepared is just three pages. It's got some detail on the observations, the evidence that we've seen, that the failure rate is increasing. The other documents are, the dam safety document is three different pieces. I've stapled it all together here. Lot more legalese. I was just given descriptions of what I was seeing. Many different reasons that we have this type of a document. I've got a purpose and need statement. Again, many different needs for that. I've got to update that with what we saw last week. But we're at the point where we've got the access. The one owner is in Nevada. Not likely that they're going to be able to make this happen. And if the city would consider taking on the project, getting it to happen, the long-range taking it out is going to be funded by other funding entities, and we'll get a number of different, to leverage. We're thinking that's about $300,000. Right now, to get in, take down some of the, some of the rock off the top, some of it will be put on land on the south side, some of it on the north side. And the mayor was talking about shoring up. He's talking about the wall that's leaning. The rock that gets off would be put in to keep that wall from falling further. Partial removal in the dam safety world, partial breach, and the full removal, hopefully next year, 2020, that design work has been funded by the State Ecosystem Restoration Program. So I should stop talking, because I talk too much. Questions, comments?
Alderman Clifford.
Is there any, or does it need or any preliminary engineering for the temporary shoring that has to be done, or is it all done?
So Josh Carverhal and I both work out of the Asa Blumer Building. He's going to be doing sketch plans and permitting. This would be under a next flood measure permit. I'm doing the point person. He's got too much going on. Ben's got too much going on. I've been tasked to take on these other efforts. That's probably going to be just maybe some lines on a photo. I've spoke with the Army Corps today. We've, I've been speaking with all the different stakeholders for the last three years. The full removal will be a very detailed set of plans.
If I may follow up?
Certainly.
Mr. Mayor, is this going to be something that's done in-house or out to bid for this work, or?
So what we're going to ask for is a waiver for the bidding process due to the emergency situation. We believe if we end up going out to bid and going through that process, it would be a month or more before we could get anybody on board. And I think that's just cut too close. We are aware of one contractor, and we actually only think that there is one here locally that has the equipment and the ability to go in there and do that work. And we, like I said at the beginning, I'd like to get that done sooner rather than later. So I think there might be a couple of opportunities to find out if we could be reimbursed on, at least partial, for some of this work. I'm not sure if that's going to be possible or not, but I think the public safety risk outweighs what, and I hate to put a number on it, and I don't really know exactly where that's going to fall, about 10, 15, something like that.
Five, 10, 15. If they can get, mobilize, get in, push the material to the sides and not have the time and the cost of trucking the rock away.
That cuts down the cross-
They might be able to get in and out in a day.
You said you already had easements, nobody?
Yeah, we've gotten sign offs, actually, just in the last couple of days from property owners to be able to access, because they realize the liability on them to, if something were to happen.
Thank you.
Alderman Chure.
Thank you. So those of us who were here about a year or so ago, when you gave a presentation on the dam and the costs, and I knew it was all about trying to put together the different funding sources and who was going to do what and who owned, and I remember it was going to be a long project. It sounds like we need now to do something. And so that was my specific question, in terms of what is it going to be, you know, how much, how are we going to do that process? And I think the mayor has answered that piece. I think we have to do it. I think, you know, $10,000, $15,000 to prevent the road from flooding and all of the other things seem to make a lot of sense.
Pretty good investment.
So whatever we need to do.
So if I understand correctly, it's a motion to waive the bidding process, allowing you to, due to an urgent situation.
As an emergency situation. I think that that's the action.
We need to suspend the rules.
I'm sorry. Move to suspend the rules.
Second. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Clifford.
I move to waive the bidding process in regards to the Dunkley Pond emergency situation.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to waive the bidding process? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
In the funding for the project, you know, I'll take it out of the current budget if I have to take it out in the future, I'll just hold it back.
Alderman Chure.
Todd, Mayor, real quick, the wall, I noticed to the north of the dam, a lot of water is coming over that, was coming over that the other day, and obviously causing a lot of the runoff and property damage to the north side. How will these repairs to the dam affect that part of the wall, the retaining wall that goes off to the north? Are we going to make that higher as you shore up the dam? Because I imagine there's some, it's going to go a little higher, too. What's that going to do to that northern wall that comes, that spills, you know, and drainage events like that?
Yep. So first off, the dam top of it will be taken down maybe two, two and a half feet. In this photo on the third page, there's water that's pouring out. It would be the stone above those gaps that would be taken out. So in lowering the dam, and partially now and in the future, it's lowering flood elevations. The stone wall on the water side, there's another stone, another concrete wall, excuse me, they're both concrete walls, that are on the north property. So it's the one between the, the water wall and the building, that's the one that's falling. You noticed where the water is coming through, and I think that's in the-
Probably 30 feet north of the dam or something.
Yep, yep. That's in photo two.
So if you bring the dam down and lower the pond level, so it won't breach that and start running off into that north property, right?
That's the concept. So-
Unless we get another huge event.
Yeah. That rain was 2.43 inches.
Pretty short period of time.
Yeah, over a short period of time. And getting specifically to fix that piece right there on that wall where it's leaking through on photo two, that's the long-range goal. That's, there's not a robust way, a manner of fixing that now that's going to hold up. Lowering the dam and lowering the water surface elevation is the better approach.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we, thank you. We are on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Treasurer Markowski, financial report, September 30th, 2019. Yes, dear.
Were we going to add my update to the agenda?
We did.
Oh, we did? Okay. I missed that.
We just haven't gotten to committees yet. But we'll get there. We added the general committee, is that what you were asking?
Yeah.
Yes. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you. My apologies, I got the information out a little bit late this quarter. But what is included is the first quarter balance sheets, income expense for all of the funds. We usually take this report, I will refer it to Finance Committee, so we can go through it in more detail. And I think a review of the first quarter is really important as we get to the budget. So if you look through them and you have questions, that would be a great opportunity to look at some of those things and what we might be looking at in next year's budget. So, but again, if you ever have questions on the financials, please reach out, and I'm happy to go over them. And I will post them on the website, so they're available for the first quarter. When I was preparing tonight, there were two things that I really thought were important in the packet. One being, I prepared a summary of expenses for, just by department, so I just wanted to go through that quickly. The bottom line for the general fund, we're at, should be at 25%. We're at 26%. That includes encumbered balances, so that's probably a little bit higher than actual. Few of the departments that I wanted to look at, government buildings at 33%. I noticed the liability insurance there, so I'll take a look and see why that's a little bit higher than we'd like it to be. Recreation Department below, and this, the lower section breaks it down by division for recreation, and you can see right off that White's Park at 90% expenses. And that's really a timing issue with the pool, when it's open and when the expenses are incurred. So that is not unusual there. And the other one was the program department at 72%. That's, that's pretty high for the first quarter. I did check in with the rec superintendent, Kim Peters, and it's really, seasonal employees have really tipped that high for the first quarter. But also, if you look at the revenue, you have some excess revenues there, too. I think revenues are at 58% in programs. So you have some offset there, but those I point out because they're a little bit over the target. I point out because they're a little bit over the target. So, I, but any questions on that, the expenses?
Alderman Torrey.
I move to refer to finance committee, the first quarter numbers to finance committee.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to refer to finance? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Yeah, Alderman Torrey.
Mayor, I'm glad you point out the revenues on rec programs because it's always been the assumption of this board, at least since I've been here, that the programs, even if they were over budget, then, then they're bringing in the revenues that would offset that and counter that. So, I'm glad that you point that out with the revenues. I do want to make sure the revenues do keep up with any of the
Right.
overages in the programming budget, portion of that budget, though, so.
Okay. Well, that's something that we'll watch right along then. But, and then the other report that I really wanted to highlight was the delinquent report. Delinquencies are really high. If you look at the prior year, delinquencies, 1.6 million. That's even down over 100,000 from the start of the, this fiscal year. I will point out that we have eight tax sales scheduled next week, end of the, on Friday, and then Tuesday of next week. So, that, if we have bidders for those, that's, that could be another 127,000 to, to lower that delinquent total. But I'd really like to spend some time in committee looking at those numbers and trends for delinquencies because I think that's an important number to be watching.
Alderman Whitcomb.
Yeah, just thinking of delinquencies, one of the things that always concerns me is if this is some kind of lead indicator for larger trouble in the local economy. Do you see any particular trends in what's driving the delinquencies? Are these commercial properties? Are they residential? Is there anything about them?
I, I haven't taken the time to break that down, but I would try to do that and compare to previous years where we're at, that first quarter, and really look at it. We have some properties that we're looking at, some potential projects. Though, that's 120,000 that we're kind of holding in delinquency, hoping that those things will come to, come to fruition. So, yeah. But we can look at it in more detail.
Sure, in committee.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. So, we are on to city engineer Rotondo, contract amendment requests, Ripley Road Water, Maine. Welcome.
So, this, this contract amendment is for the South End Water Distribution Project. The original project came in under budget by about $170,000. So, that additional money, coupled with the, the two loan amendments that the board approved previously, gave us enough funds to go ahead and fund a bid alternate that we didn't have enough money originally to do on Ripley Road. So, that, that construction has already started. And this, this contract amendment is for our consulting engineer, Otter Creek Engineering, to go ahead and do the construction inspection and construction administration. So, we're asking for a contract amendment in the amount of $38,680 for professional services related to the construction phase services for the South End Project.
Alderman Whitcomb.
I move to suspend the rules. Second.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Whitcomb.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a contract amendment in the amount of $38,680 for professional services related to the construction phase services for the South End Water Distribution Improvement Project.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to authorize the mayor to sign? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we are on to reports of standing committee. We do have Alderman, it says Clifford, Alderman Clifford was ill, so Alderman Tomala covered the public works committee. Do we want to do a vocal report? Do you want to save it for the next meeting? It's up to you.
Basically, it was just an update by fathom. I can provide more detail on it next, next meeting. But it did seem like things were trending in a positive direction was the overall gist of what we, what we got.
Great. Alderman Clifford.
I just wanted to thank Alderman Tomala for covering for me.
Absolutely. So, we are on to general committee. Alderman Tomala.
So, just wanted to give you all an update on the referral bias training for the Board of Alderman to the general committee. So, since the topic of implicit bias training for the Board of Alderman was referred to the general committee, I've held off on scheduling this meeting. And I have no interest in, in running a circus-like meeting full of personal agendas and sideshows, which would yield nothing productive in the way of bias training and only reopen scars of divisiveness in, in Rutland. It's become abundantly clear to me that no city funding will be made available for implicit bias training. In the meantime, I've had numerous private discussions with my fellow board members and other individuals on their past experiences with bias training, their opinions on bias training, and even discussed providers of bias training who might be willing to offer this training to the board at no cost to the city. There may be several options available to the city, and these providers have been, or will be approached by the people who have recommended them. If a provider of implicit bias training agrees to provide the training and meet specific stipulations that were kind of the concerns of, of those that I've talked to, the most important being that any training is provided at no cost to the city or the trainees, then a committee meeting on this topic will not be scheduled, and rather, the training will simply be scheduled. I've outlined those rough stipulations for the, for the board to review, and, and I'll pass those along for, for their review. And that's what we have at this point.
Okay. All right. So, we are on to, there's other, no other standing committee reports. So, we are on to reports of select committees. Alderman E. Torrey, marketing committee.
Thank you, madam. The regional marketing, the marketing committee met on October 10th to discuss the regional marketing initiative update. Committee members present were myself, Alderman Gillum, Ryan and Whitcomb. Others present were Board President Davis, Alderman Humphrey, Mayor LaRere, Mary Cohen from the Chamber, and Tyler Richardson from Reddick. The meeting convened at 5:35 PM to provide an update on the real Rutland marketing campaign. After the contract with Mondo Media Works ended in December 2018, a new RFP was put out and Lift out of Saratoga, New York, was selected in April of 2019. The principal at Lift is a university, a Castleton University grad and has a familiarity with the area. Lift has honored the work and utilized the assets Mondo created around building brand awareness and is moving forward to create and execute an integrated marketing campaign serving content to targeted personas and to generate qualified leads by identifying people who are interested in moving here. They developed two personas to target, the outdoor enthusiast, who is looking for an affordable living situation with easy access to outdoor amenities, and the urban dweller, who is looking for a change of pace and a more relaxed lifestyle. These personas were built on the data generated from the first two years of the campaign. Lift has increased the specificity of their targeting, these, these personas. They have also expanded the geographic targets based on the data to include all of the northeast corridor, mountain states with resort towns, and Arizona. Mary and Tyler shared with us the new data of site traffic, which you can see in the attached info. In addition, since September 9th of this year, 519 people have downloaded the guide, The Life You Were Meant For. Fifteen people have signed up for the red carpet concierge service, and 369 entered the contest to win a trip to Rutland. The goal for year three is to generate 500 good family leads and convert 50 of those to new residents. Since fall of 2018, 21 families who have moved here can be attributed to the number of activities and events connected to our regional marketing campaign. President Davis, Davis encouraged the regional marketing team to connect visitors to more than just the beautiful area amenities like realtors, Dave Walk, and business and job opportunities, so people could get a full picture of living in the region. Alderman Ryan asked about the demographics of folks who were engaging the website or the materials, and encouraged the team to look at ways to increase and encourage diversity in our region. Tyler and Mary also made the point that with this campaign, we are now able to see the data about the work being done to market our region and act on the trends we are seeing. Indeed, the early work on the campaign was necessary to get to this stage, and that the marketing team could now be more intentional in its recruiting efforts. This report was for information only. The regional marketing campaign will stay in committee for future updates. The meeting concluded at 6:15.
So, are there any questions of Alderman E. Torrey? We do have Mary Cohen and Tyler here. If you'd like to address the board, take a, take a minute. It was a very good meeting. It was very positive. It was nice to see things moving forward, so.
We're, we're very excited now to be able to actually count, you know, and share the, the first two years of the campaign. It was challenging because we're all really having impressions and clips and things that we're having. Being able to count families that are actually here now based on our efforts is, so far, in the first eight weeks, or maybe eight weeks, maybe six months, I have an update from October 10. We have 800 downloads of that guide. So, these are people who are actually giving us their email address because they're interested in learning about E. Torrey. For us to follow up on these leads, we're, we're hoping to really hit our target of 50 families in this. The other thing I want to say, there are family members of our community that are acting as volunteers for the red carpet service. Because Tyler and I can't comprehend all the people that are, you know, inquiring above the lead, so I'm thankful to all those who have volunteered to take on families. So, that program is working very well.
That building was sort of scaffolding that we built. That was built to sort of support this marketing effort over the last several years. That's really what's been the secret sauce, just sort of closing these businesses. Thinking about moving to reach out to this effort.
We had another state-of-stay weekend, you know, of course, with the Vermont Department of Tourism. That's a really good connection and link. We, this past week, our Friday, we had six families come and visit. The turnout from the community was great. We invited Department of Labor, some of them, to explore employment opportunities. So, we're, we're doing, we're not just, you know, digital marketing. There's obviously a lot of other things that we're needing to do to support this campaign.
Any questions for Mary, Tyler, or Alderman E. Torrey? Alderman Whitcomb?
Yeah, I just really want to stress how amazing this work actually is. The, the systems that are in place that activate upon someone expressing interest in the area are, they're nothing short of phenomenal. This group has really just put together these great strategies to reach out and capture anyone who's showing interest. And it is really showing the real numbers. People are actually moving to the region now.
Great. Wonderful. Nice job. We appreciate it. All right. We are on to select committees, committee of the whole, and Alderman Whitcomb agreed to read the report for me. Alderman Whitcomb.
All right. Committee of the whole. We met on October 17th at 6:00 PM. Members present were Alderman E. Torrey, Mattis, Clifford, Humphrey, Whitcomb, Tomala, Reveal, Ryan, and President Davis chaired. Others present were Mayor LaRere, Attorney Blumer, and Josh Diamond, the Deputy Attorney General. The topic was the opioid issue. Mayor LaRere opened the meeting introducing Deputy Attorney Josh Diamond, representing the coordination's council, council, which Mayor LaRere is a member of, representing the city. This is the state of Vermont participating in a multi-state lawsuit against a big pharmaceutical, Purdue Pharma in general, and, I believe, two of the distributors. The cases that the opioid drugs were misrepresented as safe and effective and then sold to the public. Class action structure would allow the municipalities to participate. The focus would be the city would get a portion of that settlement. We are already in and would have to take action in which to opt out. So, that's the decision we have to make, but otherwise, we stay in. And we have until November 22nd to opt out. The committee entered into executive session at 6:25 PM to discuss particulars of the suit. We came out of executive session at 7:15 PM. No action was taken, and the meeting was adjourned.
Thank you so much. We are on to reports of Representative Alderman Whitcomb, Project Vision.
So, this, everyone should have a copy of Project Vision. And this in particular is highlighting the work being done in the community health subgroup. They meet the 30th Tuesday of every month, and so I definitely want to stress that to the public. If you're interested, please join. We need many more community members. Within the community health subgroup, we have multiple other subgroups. One's the transportation subcommittee. Currently, we just concluded a, a 200, or we concluded a survey in which we got 200 responses regarding utilizers of public transportation throughout the city. This includes both people who provide services and their perception of transportation, and those who utilize the service. Some of the things that were cited in this work was infrastructure is a barrier to people. So, as a result, we're working with different stakeholder groups, identifying what we can do to improve this, and working in collaboration with City Hall. Bus shelters are a noticeable theme that comes up amongst people in the city. So, we are looking at, you know, what do we need to do with this? There are potential access to grants to install bus shelters, and we're hoping to build a little bit of synergy between Rutland Area Robotics, who are looking for a project, in particular focusing on transportation. Also, through this, we hopefully can pilot a ride-share program. And one of the ways we hope to do this is by demonstrating the dollar amount that's associated with people missing transportation, by people missing appointments due to transportation, and to perhaps get some buy-in for some of our larger healthcare facilities. Under the homelessness prevention group, they're trying to, they're looking at a small group of people to get into transitional housing from the hospital to what ultimately be a permanent housing situation, and hopefully getting the hospital to buy a couple of beds to support and partner with other agencies, so that people have places to go. Regarding suicide prevention work, there's significant community work going on right now. Recently, the U-Matter Gatekeeper and mental health first aid training has occurred, and we have work underway to get some of our own people trained locally. Kristy Anderson, who is a member of Rutland Regional, presented the adult lit, the adult hit around zero suicides, and she has about a 40-minute presentation that's a high-level overview for organizations, and she's happy to do if people are interested. The non-opioid committee, they have recently finalized a brochure on different substances and symptoms. It's currently with marketing and expected for a completion of this month on the 24th, and they'll bring that to the next Project Vision meeting. The intent of that brochure is around making sure everyone is educated around other addictions besides opioids that are happening in the community. We've obviously invested an enormous amount in the city, in the region looking at opioids. And as a result of that, we may have backburners in some of the other drugs that have a serious impact. And then, to do that, committee on December 11th, there will be a presentation on addiction recovery at Tuttle Hall at CSJ with a panel discussion. There, they'll be sharing resources with the community. And then, community connections and mentoring. Mentoring in this area has morphed into the Vermont Youth Project. So, that's a combination of Partners for Prevention, Trauma Avengers, and the Vermont Youth Project. The Mentor Connector is partnered with the Vermont After School, and the survey has been administered to 7th through 12th graders in Rutland City, along with the same grades at the Slate Valley School District. Following that, a group will be attending a data discussion meeting on December 18th in Burlington, and they'll be having a kickoff discussion in January, potentially at Castleton University. Rutland and Fairhaven will have smaller group discussions in February to decide what strategies to put into place regarding this. And that is what's going on in Project Vision Health.
Great. Is there any questions? Alderman Ryan?
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just wanted to add something while we're on the topic, that there was a promotion at Rutland City Police Department. Officer Jason Williams was promoted to corporal.
Great. Thank you for letting us know. Alderman Gillum?
Under the December 11th meeting, what time is that meeting at Tuttle Hall?
I will have to look and get that back out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman E. Torrey.
At the last Project Vision meeting, and there was an article about it, somebody knows, there's a question of, you know, what is Project Vision working on? What are the things we can do? And in light of what's happening, is there anything different that we could do? And I would just encourage anyone out there who wants to have, do anything, who wants to engage with the community, that Project Vision is a way that you can make, that you can have, have an impact. There are a number of people there. There's a number of agencies there. And it's, it's really just an opportunity that if, if you're feeling a call to action around anything that would be helpful to the community, there is somebody at Project Vision who would be willing to be a part of it. That is what Project Vision does. That's what's great about our community. And so, I would encourage anybody who feels a call to action, particularly if it's something related to the events in the last couple of weeks, that they get in touch with any of the people who are involved in Project Vision, Matt Prowdy, Joe Kraus, or any of us on the board that go regularly.
Great. Thank you. This is a nice report. I think it's not one we've seen too often. So, thank you. We appreciate you getting that done. Any other questions for Alderman Whitcomb? Seeing none. So, we're under petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. We don't have any. So, we are So we are now, we need a motion to go into the Board of Control Commissioners?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We just have one, the saloon, a third-class liquor request, and we need to circulate for signature. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any debate on the motion to circulate for signature? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair?
Yes. I'm sorry, and Matt will, Alderman Reveal will abstain. Excuse me, Matt, for missing that. We need a motion to go out.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are under unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Seeing none. We're under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Alderman Whit...
I would like to refer Engine, the sale of Engine 2 to public safety.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
What do you got?
We got a second. He's a mover, you're a seconder. Okay. Refer to public safety, the sale of Engine 2, moved by Alderman Whitcomb, second by Alderman Tory. Is there any debate on the motion to refer? Alderman Whitcomb?
Just as a follow-up to that, this is a continuation of the discussion that we had about a couple of months back of Engine 2 being potentially sold for a vehicle that is better suited for our fire department. The chief has an update.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to refer, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Is there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business? Alderman Clifford.
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to request that the chair of the intermunicipal committee reach out to Chairman Terrence Tini and the town, maybe to schedule a meeting. You know, bring us up to speed with them, see if we can work together on anything, if there's anything going on, just to keep the line of communications open.
Okay, so just to sit down, how do you do?
Yeah.
Okay. Who's my chair of intermunicipal, Billy? Okay. So the motion is a request to ask the intermunicipal chair to hold a meeting with the town of Rutland's intermunicipal committee to do, meet and greet and see what we can do, what we can share. Any debate on that motion? Was it seconded? We had a motion, didn't we second it?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Wish it was that easy?
Yeah, me too.
[laughing].
The motion is to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of a contract would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will, will divulge the board's position on the contract provisions to be negotiated.
So moved. Second.
Any debate on the motion to go into executive session? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Um, and then a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, recreation superintendent, director of maintenance, treasurer, and city attorney to discuss the negotiation of a contract as allowed under Title I, Section 313a1a.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll stand down for a few minutes here.